I should wear my Maple Leafs jersey.
Alright, I'm gonna open the meeting at 6:34. For those of you who are attending, send that signs, the sign-in sheet if you could, it's, I know floating around somewhere, so. Alright, Mr. Duff, sixth grade leadership.
We do have a couple of sixth grade leadership students here today, I don't know their names, I don't know where they're from, but I'm certainly sure that they will introduce themselves to you prior to what's starting.
I'm Noah Mulberg. I'm Noah Mulberg, sixth grade leadership.
So they're presenting for Warren and Westbrook Field tonight, but you guys can speak up just a little bit, okay? Okay?
I'm on vacation. Leadership Club assistant in our local first class, sixth grade, we're getting part of this one that was in our class. We're doing EBS practice for the group that has a major, was a success leadership, um, leadership. Leadership Club helped check in the parents. We get March Mathless. March Mathless came down to the two second grade classes and Miss Ross's class won the championship title in an ice cream party. Well, yes, we can be as substitute to being part of the bands and we decide on voting. The bands will be, um, made sense for fourth to sixth grade. Yearbook, Leadership Club chose H dot Hawaii slash Hawaii and Z for this year's book. Leadership Club is helping with flyers and signs to help sell them, help, helping to make sure that there are candid photos of all students.
I have a quick question, do you explain what, and I think that you guys know, can you talk a little bit about the night, uh, night at the museum?
The night at the museum is where historical figures come, like, alive, and they, like, speak about their history. It's basically just letters, yeah.
So they dress up like the characters in the book?
Yeah, they just sort of, like, present, they have, like, different artifacts that they created at home and stuff. They also have a little circle of names.
Do you remember the moonlight field card? Did you enjoy it or not?
Yes. Morning. Classroom student, you know, considered, participated in a challenge that was in the city map. Miss Davis, her work in the classroom, she's around here. Quote, "The fifth and sixth grade band continues to meet on Tuesdays after to practice. Kindness Club recently visited each classroom to complete a special activity. Leadership Club continues to do daily jobs and is preparing a school-wide community service project." Math Academy, over equal vacation, some students from group three to six received extra marks for participating in the show. During the interclass period, students built puff mobiles.
Any questions?
Is that it?
That's it?
Alright, so I have a question. So, the math academy thing over April vacation, did either one of you two participate in that?
No, this is for the students.
Oh, okay, so do you know what a puff mobile is? Neither do I. Thought maybe you had a little insight as to what it was. Alright, anybody have any questions?
I have mine.
That was yours? Sorry, I still have some. Mr. Burgess?
Can you give me an example of what the kindness club does when they visit classrooms?
So that's in Warren, um, so, we did have the kindness club here last month, and they do different activities, they let students and teachers within the school community, um, and they talk about, they go into classrooms and talk about ways that they need to.
But so they were not with us?
Yep. It started this year.
Let's go, they'll need some kindness too.
So the Math Academy had fifty students that participated between February and April, um, and they, they have to have a culminating experience that's part of the brand, so on, uh, we'll be talking to the school community, it's not going to be a night trip or a, uh, a stage trip, but on June the fifth, uh, students in the accelerated academy are invited to a Fenway card, uh, for a STEM day, at Fenway, we used to do it with great prior, that is a good culminating experience for the accelerated academy students, and that's all.
Alright, you guys are free to stay and listen to all the rest of the stuff, or you are free to go home and study and have dinner?
They've been cast tomorrow morning, so.
Oh, yeah, them cast, what, what Ben Cast do you have tomorrow?
I'm ELA.
ELA? Mrs. Sears said math, she guessed wrong. Well, good luck tomorrow in your ELAM cast. Alright, thank you guys. Alright, and, uh, Hannah and Kendall are still on a plane somewhere, so we have, are you guys the future of the, uh, student advisory?
Are you possibly, we don't know.
Oh, you have elections?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um, I'm Warren, I'm filling in for Hannah and Kendall tonight, but I'm on the eleventh grade, um, committee for student advisor.
Same, but my name's Allison.
In addition to being a student advisory council member, do you have any other roles within the school community?
Yeah, I'm also the student council president.
And Allison, do you have any roles within the school community as well as our regular community?
Allison, you were here a couple months ago, so.
Yes, I stood at attention for forty-five minutes. So I'm also on the student council board, I am the public relations, and then I just started, um, observing calls with the rescue squadron in Westbrook Field.
Fantastic, how's that going?
Pretty well, I'm on my first two days over for vacation.
Nice.
And speaking of, this was the pressure funeral that we had, uh, before break, students from Mr. Tomover's physics class, along with grade six leadership students served sandwiches and cakes, all attended. Pressure partners from Warren, Westbrook Field, Brookfield, and Hardaway were not attending, and, um, all the pressure partners.
We also had a community cleanup day, so basically, students and teachers and people from the community came together in Warren and went out and picked up trash on the side of the road, and just did anything they could to try and keep our earth and environment.
This was the student government, government day trip, um, Lila Brogdy was quite much represented back student government day in law seven point six.
And I actually dear to talk about it.
Yes.
She's next, she's next on the agenda.
And that's a picture with Senator Olivera, uh, who is a senator for.
At class, we had a pep rally where the eighth grade faculty came together, and they did a fun little surprise for all the students, so it was grade seven, eighth, and tenth all finished their first round, which is ELA, and they all came together and got all the students really excited, made everyone happy pretty hard.
Um, and Miss Staubers' anatomy class, over in a Julian, Nurse Carpenter and Michael Staubers, um, came into Miss Staubers' anatomy class to teach about the cardio vascular system, then went to analyze the heart diseases of the cardio vascular system, and how those diseases affect structures in the system. Um, both professionals also went over their career paths and.
So they were able to actually dissect the heart.
Wow.
Um, we also had some junior firefighters that were sworn in, that were also here previously too.
Yep.
Um, Charles Smith, Trenton Benson, and Kenneth Walcox, uh, this event took place prior to April break at the Warrentown Hall, um, and they just did their first couple days of training too, these past few Sundays since then.
First spirit week, the week of April eighth to twelfth, right before break, we did a couple spirit week days, we did not have a pep rally that week, but the participation was still very recognized and very big in the school. Our student council members set together a theme for each day of the week, and students were able to use their experience and leave the dress up, and then these are some pictures from each day on Monday, which is pretty exciting.
Uh, the women's ensemble performed that mic up, we traveled to Belgium for the Massachusetts National Coal Conductors Association to perform three pieces in front of Channel Three judges, and we were evaluated on a panel they played and got a half hour clinic with Mr. George Murphy, which was interesting, uh, he gave us some recommendations to change how we played and to improve, which was really cool. We missed rounds by two points, which was a little disappointing, but it was a fun trip.
I think I heard weed in that.
Yeah, I'm also on the women's ensemble too.
And then the eighth grade Washington DC trip, it was eighth and eleventh grade because when we were in eleven, we're in eleven now, but when we were in eighth grade, we got COVID, so we didn't get to go, so it's pretty cool that they still, a couple of us still hop onto the trip, and they went to Washington last month as part of the yearly trip, they could visit the following sites, the Washington Monument, Arlington Cemetery, World War Two Memorial, the Lincoln Memorial, Vietnam Memorial, White House, Holocaust Museum, Museum of Natural History, the US Capitol, and the National Zoo, and then students will be present more at the next meeting so that they can talk to you a little bit more detail. And I believe that's all of you guys have any questions.
Alright, so, did either one of you two go on the eighth grade, or today, have you two, either of you two go on the Washington DC trip, I won't call it the eighth grade trip?
I didn't.
You did not, okay, so I can't ask you what your favorite museum was, right? Alright, did either one of you two participate in Spirit Week?
I did, yes.
What was your favorite day of Spirit Week?
Um, Thursday, we did soccer mom versus barbecue dad, I think that was a very popular one.
That may have passed.
Okay, alright, anybody else have any questions?
How does a barbecue get a beer?
I mean, that's really cute. Yeah, just channel out, like, camp my dad's, you know, like, jean shorts, had an apron on, it was pretty awesome.
Any other questions? Alright, well, good luck in, uh, in elections, and, uh, yeah, maybe we'll either see you guys later on this year, or, uh, somebody else? Alright, thank you. Alright, Mr. Shepherd and Mr., is it Mr. Cos over there too? Alright. Lila, you're next.
So I'm Travis Shepherd, seventh grade district teacher, I went to student government day with Mr. Cos, our ninth grade district teacher, and we brought Lila Brogding. So the way we decide who we bring to student government day is eleven graders get to write an essay, and we take the name off the essays and not the high school teacher quote as to who wrote the best essay, whoever writes the best essay gets to go to student government day. So April fifth this year was student government day, it was the seventy, seventy-seventh student government day, um, I think we probably missed two because of COVID, it's just a really nice day because you get to, you get to see kids from all across the state, all socioeconomic status, stuff like that, interact, interact with each other, um, so what they do is they give the kids a House bill to debate and a Senate bill to debate, um, maybe Maya didn't know which one she ended up with, um, but it's, it's a nice day, we get to take a student to Boston, I think it was Lila's first time taking a tea, so, just like little things like that, it's an experience for them.
Um, so the bills that we debated, the House one was about increasing access to financial aid at public universities, and the Senate one was about, um, increasing access to, um, give, um, like, educator diversity and breaking barriers for, um, diversity in education.
And did you have a side that you had to debate, or you were able to debate whatever side you felt like?
Um, you could debate whatever.
Okay.
Debating, um, I voted yes on both of the bills, just because I didn't disagree with either one of them, and both of them ended up passing.
So you did get to vote on them as well, huh?
Yeah.
I, I think one of the things we've noticed over the, so this is my fourth time going, um, the amount of kids who, who have been going to student government day has just increased over the years, my, the first year I went, I was able to sit in the room up in the gallery, this year, Mr. Cos and I literally could not get in the room, there were so many students, not only in the seats of the representatives, but also in the gallery, Lila started up in the gallery and eventually ended up on the floor, so it, it seems like the state is, is getting more welcoming and getting more schools and students participating, which is always good news.
Any, any questions? What else do you have to add? So, uh, why do you want to do this, do you want to do with your?
Um, I'm thinking about going to law, and I think it was a really good experience for me to actually see how laws are passed in the government and talk to Senator Olivera about his experience representing our district.
You maybe just want to talk about a little tour that he gave you guys?
Yeah, since he's a senator, he gave us a tour, um, of the senate chamber, and he took us to the old one, um, which was from way back, like, in colonial times, and then he took us into the new one, which is where, um, all the student senators were sitting and debating the bills, and he took us, um, out to the patio, which is where the picture was taken of me with him, and it was really interesting because he was telling us the history of, um, the building and how, um, there's, like, murals or portraits of various, like, senators from history, and, um, like, their whole early government.
This sounds like a fun day? If that's, if that's a kind of thing, I don't know, it's, I would probably have to, um, use a gear to politics, it's a, it's a once in a lifetime opportunity today, so. Any other questions? Alright, well, like everybody else, you're free to stay and listen to the rest of it, or you're free to go home and have dinner and study, and if you guys have SATs, you know, so.
When can you sit down, can you sit down with your local? Uh, like, super generous for it. Yep, so, um, a few months ago, we started discussing the possibility of potentially showing drivers a deck as, uh, service department, because something that we had a long time ago, um, and then it was, um, we, we like, uh, for some financial reasons, uh, however, it was in a spot that we started talking about when you guys said that, so that we provide alternative for kids, we like, maybe not only have, have a, quite a lot, but hopefully have a, have a more active, um, providing us out of, uh, now, I have, as you guys have said, about a thousand dollars, um, so we're in the process of working out some numbers to see exactly where we can fall, uh, part of being, like, a program is being, uh, certified by the, uh, charter, uh, so we did do an internal posting, uh, we always post in front of the first and the next, certainly, I think we're posting in front of, and we have candidates that apply for it, we had one candidate that applied externally, um, he is here tonight, um, we're going to introduce, uh, Mr. Porter, uh, he will be the first step in the gang, we'd like his, uh, piece of money, we did reject our insurance company, and we also rejected a few vendors for vehicles, uh, both to our East and our West, um, yeah, so far, we have one goal on it, the upcharge that they have is obviously we're putting in additional break-in on the passenger side, um, which is required in the state. We do have the application that you can go, uh, to the state of Massachusetts, unfortunately, our other application has expired, um, so it's going to be a hundred and fifty dollars charge to apply and become a certified by the, uh, public school here, and we look to service students, both in Warren and outside, like, kids that come to our school. Um, but Larry Porter, Larry, if you want to step up from now, introduce Larry Porter, Larry Porter is a retired state police officer, Larry Porter is also one of our day-to-day subs now, um, Larry has gone through the driving, they have a machine, uh, and is, like, honestly, he, he does a terrific job with kids, and he just happens to be looking for a job that would provide him, uh, some things to do outside of being a guy, and I think that he would be a great fit for this leadership, uh, he's the leader, as he's serving the kids, seeing the advocate, well, he's been very respectful, and with his background, uh, in, uh, you know, the police business, he knows a lot, um, a lot of those regulations on the road, as well as now being certified, uh, as a teacher, which goes a long way, and he did, he, you know, we do that process in order to get a job like this, and we're fortunate enough to potentially have a killer forty-one, or six more, to, 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 or completely got that exposure.
So he would do the classroom portion and the honor roll for you?
Yeah, we both, yeah. That would be a roll, right now, like I said, our average is about a thousand dollars, um, once we figure out exactly what the cost of the vehicle will be, the insurance fees, and then it's paid, um, you know, my goal would be to try to do whatever else, that, um, dollars or less, um, but we have to develop that breaking in plans, obviously, we're not looking to make fundaments, but we certainly have to make sure of covering our costs, um, plus we will get a maintenance to the vehicle, um, so, I think that would be a very good thing.
Any questions?
Would we be leasing the vehicle or trying to purchase one out of it?
Uh, we both both ways, um, there's an upcharge of twenty-seven hundred dollars to move it, move the break from one vehicle to another, um, so at this point, the most economical vehicle, vehicle that we found so far was a twenty-twenty-two Ford EcoSport, um, it had four thousand miles on it, um, and that was roughly twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, we, 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 we financed it, we signed it, and they were, like, fully flying, uh, broke the block outright, but once again, we're in the process of looking for money to get back to us, we'll get insurance quote, and then we can break down the cost by one, and then we'll look at the charge, it's a, we're running some program of all, and then a certain number of programs, so probably three sessions.
You mentioned that these sessions would be open to Quaidag students, is this something where if those numbers aren't showing up, that we'd possibly be looking to make it more available to outside students, or no?
I think, uh, if, you know, if you want a class with ten, twelve students and we had eight students, we might open it up to two or four additional slots, but I think that the charge for that will be a little bit more than the charge for a Quaidag student.
Okay.
Because it's a service that we're looking to provide for our students, not going to want to provide the same opportunities for other kids, but for those of you who have had the experience of going through driver's education, you understand how difficult it is to get time slots for kids to drive, as well as being able to get the classes and things like that, right now, we're looking at a lot of classes still being, like, during, um, April, February vacations, which is a, still an opportunity, but I think for our kids to be able to be in person, it's a much different field than being outside of the car.
Some other question, just curious, when it comes to the classroom, do you foresee that being something outside of the school day, or is that something that the kids could sign up as part of, like, a quarter class during the school?
It'd be outside of the school.
Okay.
I think eventually that would be something that we want to, but we had, and studies were certainly good, um, but I know that people have their problems about where their, where their job may or may not, their drivers.
Craig?
I'm sure you have, if you looked at, how much, how many miles can you get out of a car for drivers, then how many, how many annual miles are you looking at, like, how often are you going to have to replace the vehicle, that sort of thing?
Those are conversations that would have been happening with Greenlight and the Mottos, um, so, we're just kind of like, to be honest with you, not everybody is very, what comes into that type of information because at this point, we've become a little bit of competition, uh, but we are looking at those factors as well. But the vehicle we're looking at is our orange one, um, so it's, it's, it's.
I went for training, it was out in East Hampton, and they have fully cars, probably eight or ten cars, and I played, they were using some cars that would play, because I had to, I had to observe, so sitting in the back with sixty-year-olds, I said, I don't know, yeah, it was a good time, um, but they don't have, like, two hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, they were still using, they just, they're, it was amazing, you know?
I know, my son went through it a few years ago, the vehicle that he had had a couple hundred thousand miles on it as well.
As you were saying, it mustn't have been part of the, the charge for the program, you know, it's seven hundred dollars for a straight charge, you charge them with twenty-five dollars per student, maybe they're developing two fifty for the back of the stage, I'm saying.
Two more questions. Can any car, this would be a silly question, but can any car kind of be retrofitted, so if we found a car, or a used car, or one was donated, can that be retrofitted very easily for that second break, or do you have to buy a car that's?
No, can a vehicle be retrofitted, and he with the vehicles, and this is where it gets a little bit tricky, as you get into a lot of monstries, twenty-one, twenty-four, so you can actually get a little, uh, newer now, a lot of them have push buttons for your emergency brakes, uh, and for drivers that, they have, right now, it's.
Just have that manual e-brake.
Um, so that was why this EcoSport, Ford EcoSport was attracted, plus the, uh, was attracted, that happened.
And then just second question was, uh, this might be a little premature, but are we going to collect fees and do all that in the same, in the same manner that we collect, say, like, athletic fees, and it was, that was the instructor's duty to collect all the fees, and we ran into some problems?
It'll all be online, really, and, um, and you can't anticipate the classes, do you think?
Any questions from the side?
I have a question, are you available to take, um, the young person down?
Little sigh hustle.
Uh, it's kind of, it's a much needed, uh, much needed service, like.
I would thank you, a state police officer, and the easier job is fair.
We go along, as, as, when I was a trooper, um, we did protests, I did numerous protests, um, which was, again, pretty scary, I, I worked in this forever, like, twelve, thirteen years, and I was working all, I didn't envision myself getting shot, all of it was dying in a car crash in a protest, um, I was in four actions in a protest, um, it's, it's something I personally haven't been talking about a lot, I did here, I graduated eighty-seven, and I got my license here.
The only thing, I, I, I know, I know we all have kids that have been driving or, uh, somewhat more sooner than later, but yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head, the prices are outrageous out there, I mean, I think, for, for my son, I think I spent well over twelve hundred dollars when it came to the car used for the test and, and everything else, and additional fees, and then it wasn't very, like you said, easy to get all the, the time that you needed, so, anything we can do to support, that's huge.
I agree. Alright, well, we'll, uh, we'll, yeah, we'll wait for additional information, and, uh, thank you for substituting, and thank you for, uh, taking on this endeavor, I think it's, I think it's a much needed for the district, so.
And Mike Larry said, uh, on high of, uh, a lot of, um, so once again, former students giving back to our current students, it's just, um, absolutely appreciated.
Alright, thank you, Larry. Alright. Day on the hill.
So the MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, has their day on the hill, uh, where a representative from the school committee, if they would like to attend with me, was available on May sixth to attend to visit Boston, and they talked about important initiatives that are going on, uh, within, within the state, uh, one of the key points that are going to be talked about, obviously, is the budget, um, the budget process, and where we are with house ways and means, and the senate budget and the governor's budget, but it is on May sixth, and if anybody would like to attend that with me, um, you know, I, we can vote somebody in, or if nobody wants to attend it with me, I will be going, but.
I think you just, yeah, we just, we don't need to vote anybody in, but we just make a, you know, if somebody wants to, somebody wants to accompany Mr. Duff, um, you're more than welcome to, I know Craig's done it in the past, I've done it in the past, I know, you know.
I may be interested in going if nobody else.
Cliff, uh, Cliff has done it in the past, I, I will say that, uh, at the state house, they do have all the vocational culinary schools provide the food, and it is, uh, as, as Cliff said, free food is always good, you know? And it was good food too, so.
Some of the most.
So, but yeah, if anybody's interested, let Mr. Duff know. Alright, talk about calendar?
Yep, uh, on the SY twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, thank you Travis, uh, the wrong calendar was put in there, it was the third, uh, third week of April, uh, the April vacation was, um, it should have been the following week, uh, so the revised calendar is in, was in the packet, all that is doing is it's making, uh, April vacation a week later, which is right after Good Friday.
Okay, so we do need to revote the twenty-four, twenty-five school year calendar, I will entertain a motion for that.
I'll make the motion to approve the twenty-four.
I'll make the motion to approve the twenty four, twenty five.
School year calendar. Dustin. Okay, motion made, seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? S two, eight, six, eight. All righty, all right. And then I'm just gonna take this last bullet point. Um, I just want to recognize both Sarah and Dustin. Um, this will be their last official school committee meeting. Uh, neither one of them are, are rerunning, uh, next, next month. I think the ballot, the election is next, next month. Um, I just want to thank them personally for their, I believe, six years each of you had on this committee. Um, eight, eight for Dustin and six for Sarah. Um, I know over those, over those years, you guys have held, um, a few roles in the subcommittees, both on the budget and the building and the personnel. I know Sarah's chaired Personnel Subcommittee through contract negotiations. Dustin, you chaired Personnel Subcommittee through contract negotiations.
And COVID.
And COVID.
And COVID, yeah, that was, uh, that was interesting, so. Um, I just wanted to personally thank you guys both for your service. And, you know, door's always open if you want to come back. So I know Sarah and I have had these conversations in the past that, uh, you know, maybe in a few years, when life calms down a little bit, she may rerun for, uh, for school committee. But I think Dustin's gonna run for the hills.
I gotta diss a year ahead of me, after this next year, we'll see. I'm not gonna bet.
I'm saying.
Maybe we can have substitute school committee members.
At law. So yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys both for your service. I know, I, uh, I appreciate it. I know it's not, uh, it's, it's, it's not a high paying job. In fact, we don't get paid a penny. Um, we take a lot of, uh, a lot of comments from, uh, from everybody, be it staff or, or residents in the town. So, uh, I appreciate all you guys have done over your years of, of service, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We have one regular session minutes from last month. Anybody's got any, uh, additions, subtractions, grammatical errors, anything? Or Mrs. Courtney? I didn't see any, but. Look at that, the two, the two, the two members that I was gonna have make all the motions can't make this motion. Neither one of you were at last month's meeting. All right, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the minutes of March eighteenth. So. Craig, you did it. Mostly second in all, favor? Both abstentions. All righty. In the packet, we have our annual AHRAsbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act. Um, the call to advocacy for the House Ways and Means budget, which I believe we're gonna talk about a little bit more down the line. Um, Department of Public Health Correspondence, some, uh, regulations about private school, which I believe we're gonna talk about that later on. Um, and then some updates on the capital improvement plan, which I believe the building, do we meet last week, last month for building? So we'll talk about that in, uh, in the building subcommittee update. All right. Financial business matters.
So, uh, since our last meeting, the House Ways and Means budget came out. Uh, so we get the governor's budget and then it goes to the House and the Ways and Means Committee come out with what their recommendations on the budget are. Typically, when we're minimum aid, which means that we're receiving thirty dollars per student, more than we were receiving last year. What the House Ways and Means Committee is recommending is that we go from thirty dollars to a hundred and four dollars per student, which is a significant increase. It would be the biggest increase we've seen in years. Typically, it goes from thirty to sixty dollars, so we're anticipating, uh, you know, an increase of thirty thousand dollars. With the House Ways and Means coming in at a hundred and four dollars per student, it's roughly a seventy six thousand dollar increase on the revenue side. However, the House Ways and Means cut the rural aid from fifteen million to seven point five. Um, so we got on one end and they took from the other. Um, in your packet, in FY twenty five, House Ways and Means, um, budget, there are going to be some amendments that have been filed. One of the amendments is to actually increase the hundred and four dollars more, which I don't believe is going to happen. Um, but they're also pushing for that seven point five million to be reinstated to fifteen million. So what'll happen is it's at the Senate now, um, and if they agree with the House Ways and Means, then we'll be, then there won't be a conference, but typically the budget will go to conference. It'll go to the conference and then discuss where they're at, and they'll come out with a final version for the governor to approve. Um, so right now, it's kind of waiting to see how it goes. I did meet with, uh, the Town and Warren Select Board and met with the Town and Warren Finance Board. I am happy to report that after meeting with the Finance Board, um, and receiving the phone call from the town manager from, uh, Warren, Mr. Ferrera, that the Town and Warren has included the school district back into the omnibus. Um, so we're in a laundry article on the floor. Um, I'd like to thank the school committee for their tireless work to make that happen. I think that our transparency going through the budget season was instrumentally key with the Town and Warren, um, particularly with the Finance Board. The Finance Board is who decides whether it goes into the omnibus or on an article. Um, and the Finance Committee voted to put it on back into the omnibus where our school budget belongs. In the Town of Westbrookfield, I had a meeting on Thursday with the Advisory Board in the Town of Westbrookfield. They just want an update on the budget. They continue to express, uh, their gratitude for the work that the school committee has done to present a budget that's reasonable. Um, I think the quote was one point seven seven percent. They haven't seen the number that low in a long time. Um, so the Westbrookfield Advisory Board was happy with the number that we were going in with. I did explain to them that, uh, House Ways and Means had proposed going from thirty to a hundred and four dollars, but on the flip side of that, that we, we already was cutting half. Um, so we'll continue with, uh, fighting for that amendment. Uh, there'll be more information coming out. Representative Small has been key, uh, was working with us as, as has Senator DeGrande and Senator Olivera, Olivera and Donnie Berthin, that represents Westbrookfield. So we are continuously in conversations with everybody at this level, trying to figure out exactly where we're gonna land. I'm hoping that, uh, you know, that the rural aid goes back to fifteen million, if not more, um, and at least they get a hundred and four dollars per person. And they're also pushing for a hundred percent transportation reimbursement. Uh, they always push for a hundred percent transportation reimbursement. We can get to eighty five percent or ninety percent, um, the town is in really good shape. So I will keep the Budget Subcommittee as well as the Full School Committee updated on where we stand with the budget at our next Budget Subcommittee meeting and Full School Committee meeting.
All righty, thank you. All right, Subcommittee Updates. Mr. Morgan, you're first.
Uh, did not have a meeting, we can move on.
Look at that. And we don't have a meeting scheduled yet either, do we?
I, uh, we don't, but we probably should. Um, I thought it was the, I had it for the thirteenth of May, yeah.
It's not on the copy that you gave me.
No, it's not, it's not, oh yeah, it's right here. Yeah, it is. So that's one demerit for our chairmen.
It's not, it's not online. Mr. Duff gave me one without, without, without a date on it. So it's like you ever get my French out early.
I think it was the agenda that went out with the full packet, it's missing off.
Need to know basis.
I got it, I can read it. May thirteenth, okay.
All right. Uh, Personal Subcommittee, Mr. Landine is not here, he's out of state. Um, but we will have an update in the executive session, and there is not a meeting, uh, scheduled. Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Wors is not here. Uh, there is no update and there is no meeting scheduled for the future. Mr. Burgess, Building.
So the Building Subcommittee met on March eleventh. At that meeting, we talked about some lighting upgrades, some updates to the lighting upgrades at the various schools. Quaybar Regional Middle High School's lighting was set to begin work at three eighteen, and, uh, it's gonna be worked on at night, not including the stadium, but, uh, many of the interior and exterior lights. Uh, and Warren Elementary School, that, that lighting project was approved, and we're working to do both schools back to back. Um, and then, uh, Westbrookfield Elementary School was, uh, again, we're trying to do, start at April vacation, then transition the rest of the project at night. Um, there was also some discussion about some, uh, community volunteers looking to raise funds to upgrade the dugouts for the baseball and softball programs. And then, um, also there was some preliminary discussions with the building inspector and Board of Health of the Town of Warren for the possible construction of a concession stand down at the stadium field. Our next meeting is scheduled for May thirteenth.
All right. The Regional Agreement Amendment Committee has not met since our last meeting. I do know that Legal Counsel sent the changes back to Department of Education. I believe we're just waiting for them to send that back to, to the committee to, to review and have a positive vote. There's no future meeting scheduled for that. All right, new business.
So we have Marcy Fusco with us tonight. Um, Marcy has a child that graduated from Quaybar Community School this year. Um, she's currently operating, uh, preschool.
A fully licensed preschool, the first fully outdoor licensed preschool in Massachusetts. Actually, it was painted that road two years ago. Um, and then we also have a drop off program for ages five through fourteen, for homeschooling families. Uh, that's how we've been currently operating the last four years. We're looking to evolve into private school status to help serve our families.
And in words, we're ready to private the school status. Um, the school committee would have to approve the proposal tonight. Marcy's here to present the private school, um, give us some money, digest it, and then maybe we would have, we would have to hold on. So that you could be more forward and out forward with the private school, we'll discuss that further at the moment.
All right. Laura's yours.
So my name is Marcy Fusco. I live in Westbrookfield, my, my oldest graduated from kindergarten years ago. I have two younger children as well. Um, so in, I've, I've operated, we own a farm that we've had for fifteen years. Fifteen years, we run a summer camp that's riding, burning coal. Uh, I've worked, and actually, I made these boards mostly to keep myself on track, but also for anyone else to follow. So, um, we started this a little bit about me.
We're gonna have Mr. Duff hold it for you.
Okay.
He's gonna play, you're playing Vanna.
All right, so, uh, this is me. Uh, twenty, I've had twenty years of experience in the fields of education, behavior and psychology, uh, working with infants all the way through preschool. I've worked in both public and private sectors. Um, I've been a one to one, I've worked and supervised a separate classroom. I've been a supervisor, trained staff, I've worked as a consultant, and I've kept it through my career. Um, so I've had a farm for twelve years, for thirteen years rather. Been running a summer camp the entire time. When the pandemic hit, we were one of the only camps that was able to stay open without any mask mandates because we were completely outdoors. So we did kind of boom that year, and I had a lot of families at the end of the camp season that said to me, this is the first time I've been able to have any kind of balance with the remote working, the children, remote learning, uh, please keep something open in the fall. So we started out just working homeschooling families, and then we quickly grew into a licensed preschool that we are today. Um, uh, yeah, last year, I was actually recruited as the potential for the head of school for the village school in Royalston. They turned that down because I really believe in the program that I'm running here. Um, like I said, I've been a summer camp director for thirteen years, uh, been the program director at our program for four years. And the specialties in my own focus are executive functioning, ADHD, um, anxiety, depression, ASD diagnoses, trauma, uh, also therapeutic writing, instructor, sensor integration and avoiding虐待. Those are all kind of specialties of the memory. So this is a little bit of our school. So Wild Nature is founded from the ethos in UK that is seven years strong. Um, of course, the ethos was created out of what was coined term by nature deficit disorder. Um, it's been running really strong in, in and out of the public school system in the UK since the, since the. Uh, our founding principles take on a lot of that, but also we like to integrate the farming aspect as well, and we kind of create our own philosophy. So the, the key points of what makes us us are our connection to nature, things like, you know, how it integrates the central nervous system, critical thinking, risk assessment and environmental achievement, mental wellness. Uh, so we're really big on social emotional focus. So, um, a lot of things that we integrate into what I like to call our embedded curriculum are perspective taking and self advocacy that we started very young, being children. Uh, we talk about group writing and self writing behaviors. We use friend detective skills. Um, we always have a voice as our first tool. A lot of help we do is based on performance that mistakes are okay. But we also ask that we reflect, we repair, and then we restore. So those are all things that are really embedded in everything that we do every day with the children. Um, life skills with a purpose, so things like sustainability, traditional schools, uh, no, sorry, uh, traditional skills, working with the animals, weaving, handwork, uh, and then reciprocity through animal connection and, uh, and animal husbandry skills. Uh, effective citizenship, so a lot of what we talk about with the students is responsibility, taking accountability, working collaboratively, and, uh, you know, conservation, so that we are a good citizen of the world. And we also have a really strong focus on whole family wellness. So not only do we really advocate for educational alternatives that work for families, uh, not on, not only our own, but we like to network with other schools and educational environments that might be doing different things so that we can really, you know, point families in the right direction. Um, but we also, you know, leave in the village approach, so we do a lot of community building at our school. And, um, we also offer services of mentorship if families are looking to get into sustainability and animal husbandry themselves. Um, we offer consulting and, um, child access as well. So those are the founding principles that we started applying. Uh, so what we have been doing is a lot of our own philosophy, which I outlined. Now, moving towards private school, uh, the biggest hurdle to that is accreditation and using a curriculum. So, um, we, about a year ago, we were at our peak. We were serving fifty seven families and had seven staff on board. Um, our program was really, really flourishing and it's very wonderful. At the close of the pandemic, what we saw as things were kind of coming back online was families kind of loving what we did, but struggling with how to reintegrate the things that they had shifted to now that remote work was kind of going out the window and, you know, the whole world was kind of shifting again. Um, so what we saw, and actually, this is just. So what we saw, um, I guess I can piece up the families. So eighty percent of the families that left us upon exit interviews reported that they were needing academic support and or regular hours of childcare in order to keep up with the costs because they were moving back into work. So they were less capable, family and academics at home, if they weren't working remotely, they need more regular care because they weren't working remotely. So that was a huge reason that we lost a good percentage of our community. Uh, and then many of those families saw how private schools within the thirty mile radius. So we've done a lot of market research, we must evolve our program. Um, there are three main non-religious private schools within twenty miles. There's the village school in Royalston, there's Harts Brook in Hadley, and there's the local academy in Brookfield. Um, so all three of these schools are similar to our program, um, and all of them have some form of weight. So there is a market in the area. We do really feel that we're gonna be able to bring our family staff, and there is a community that's really wanting this kind of program. Um, and it's well committed. Right now, we have families that are traveling from Rainfield, Mass, and Stafford Springs, Connecticut, still to attend our program as homeschool, but they are seeking the academic support. So that brings us to Oak Meadow. Um, Oak Meadow is, uh, established for a long, it was one of the first accredited curriculums in the New England area used by homeschool families. It's something that I use personally with my own children, so I'm familiar with it, and the philosophy aligns very well with Wild Earth. It's very nature based, um, you know, there's some like Waldorf undertones there. And, um, they are located in Vermont, so I had reached out to them in this, you know, as, as we were starting to lose our families, and I realized, well, I can't really just create an entire curriculum myself very quickly. Uh, and they were actually seeking a school like us to model, uh, type of collaboration. So, they're maybe more excited than I am to work together with us. Uh, and we've established a model for the academic partnership. So, Wild Waters would be responsible for the direct implementation of the curriculum and individualized portfolios for each student. And then we would meet at least on a monthly basis with their team, who is accredited and, you know, works with the, works with the curriculum on a more regular basis. And they will help our staff to identify if there are areas that need more academic support or, you know, maybe, um, a different individualized plan to, in order to, uh, to meet that need. Thank you. So, um, I do have samples of the curriculum, both what we use and Oak Meadow. Right now, I've only purchased up through grade three, so that's what I use personally. Uh, but we are hoping to serve children up until age fourteen right now. We would like to get a little higher, um, as we go. But I think, um, the, the families that we know are interested are around us up to about age fifteen, so that's a good place to start. And then those older ages, we really, we have ideas about that program, but it would look a lot different with the ages. So, we just kind of take it from fourteen and then, and then from there. Um, I also have examples of our progress reports. I have emotional materials that I keep on hand. And I have, because our licensure would be easy, I have our employee handbook, our parent handbook, and our healthcare policy. So, I can take those if anybody would like to prove this information. Is there any, any other questions?
There's gotta be a couple of questions.
So, just one question. Do you have, is part of that what a typical day and week might look like when it comes to what classes and other activities would be involved?
So, that's a great question. So, um, right now, our drop-off program is per day. So, families can choose and determine on semester that they attend just Tuesdays, Tuesday and Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, any combination of those three days. Those are the three that are open. With the private school, we're looking to do a four-day schedule and most of our daily schedule remains the same. Um, I can go over that in just a second. The only thing that would change is that on each day of attendance, there would be an academic block that would be focused with the children, maybe on ELA on Monday, spend mathematics on Tuesdays, and so on and so forth. The way the Oak Meadow curriculum works, you kind of introduce the ideas and then you embed it in everything that you do so that one academic block isn't the only exposure they would catch that. But there are many different, um, what's the word? Expansion activities that you would do thereafter. So, we, we work closely with them to make sure that we were moving from there. So, the daily schedule as it exists right now, uh, drop-off is at eight-thirty. By nine o'clock, you get rolling. Usually go in, we do some, uh, farm work and some animal exposure time. Then we break for theme one activity of the day. We take the lunch break. We do the theme two activity of the day, and then we do a break. So, the themes that we run through are pretty fifty-fifty between like farming and forestal ethos. So, with forestal ethos, you're getting into survival skills. You're doing fire safety, you're learning how to do fire builds, den building. Um, and then, you know, for the younger kids, that's well, you know, we do a lot of just nature, our open exploration, get into the woods. We're gonna explore some marine pools today. Uh, we're gonna learn about hibernation. So, there's a lot of content there. And, uh, we work, within a year, we have like a list that I'm happy to provide of everything that we cover within two eighteen weeks semesters right now for school. Farming, uh, right now on the property, we have horses, pigs, alpacas, chickens, ducks, goats, and sheep. So, we use all of those animals in our program. Uh, and our, our, our methodology is, you know, here's an animal, let's learn about this animal, let's learn about their basic care. Um, what are the signs, you know, and signals, how do we communicate with them? How do we honor them? Are they a herd animal, are they a prey animal? We learn all those different types. And then, um, we get into how do we work in collaboration with these animals? So, for example, with alpacas and sheep, we do firework. So, we'll learn how to shear animals and then we'll learn how to clean and parlor wool and then the children make things out of them. So, whether it's wet felting, needle felting, weaving, drop spindle. Um, and so, they, they learn how to create products from, from the real animals that they're working with every day.
Just one follow-up before, if there's any question, if you don't mind. But that still has to translate to what the school will be, right? When it's a private school? And my question, I guess, is more along the lines of, you mentioned that some people come different days. If they, people, when you go to the private school, will they be there four days a week?
Yes, so we want to retain the option for our home parents to attend one day, two day, three day if they would like to. Um, and the private school will be four days. So, if you're looking for accreditation and academics, then we need you to attend for four days. However, if you're homeschooling and you just like a little additional support in the area of ELA, you can just attend our ELA day. Um, and, and, you know, it would be considered support not that we're signing off on accreditation. So, that's kind of why we're blocking it by day, but there is academic content all the time. I mean, even in our progressive standard right now.
Thanks for clearing that up, that helps.
Sure, I'm sorry that was not...
No, that was good.
Um, you mentioned a student portfolio. Is that something they would do at the end of all their years? Or is that every year they do and show that they've mastered all the curriculum?
Sure, so that's actually ongoing. And right now, you know, we're collecting more samples all the time from... It's just a little bit more geared towards our concept. And then anything academic that we catch, we put in that portfolio. At the end of each semester, we do a progress report. Uh, and, and the skills that Wild Waters tracks right now are not academic, but that's, I also have samples in here of how Oak Meadow tracks for academic progress. So, we would just do as a combination of those two forms for parents and add that into the work portfolio that we do all the time.
Any other questions? All right, so, one of the communications that we have in our packet is the, uh, the state regulations for private schools. So, I would recommend that, you know, everybody take a look at that as well as the... You're gonna leave that information behind for us?
Yes, yeah.
So, maybe you can scan it in and email it out to the committee.
Sure.
And then, Mr. Duff, can we turn it back to you?
Is there anything that needs to be redacted on that, Marcie?
I'm sorry?
Is there any student information that would have to be redacted on any of that?
Most of what I have is blank forms. I think I just included my children, so I may, uh, send you a blank...
Yeah, that would be good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All righty, anybody have any other questions? If not, thank you very much for your time. Um, yeah, we'll, uh, I guess, read through the information and, you know, vote on it next month. Some discussing...
Thank you so much for your time. I'm proud of you.
Thank you. And, uh, I guess like, like everybody else, you're free to go or... Actually, I think we're almost done. We have an opportunity for visitors to make statements and or ask questions about anything on the agenda, and then we have Executive Session. Mrs. Marino?
Um, I did find out what a puff mobile was.
What is a puff mobile?
Figured you guys probably know, although I don't have the answer as to who went with the bar list. They used, um, little building materials. They were small old things that with wheels and they had new sails and they could only use three puffs to get their sailing mobile down the Janus River.
Really? They should, they should have put that on YouTube or something. I wonder if some, Mr. Slattery or somebody must have a video of that that they can share with the committee. All righty, well, thank you very much for getting us that information. All righty, like I said, we do have an Executive Session. Uh, Mr. Burgess? You wanna make that motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to go into Executive Session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty-one, to include members of the school committee, Mr. Lieutenant Duff...
Mrs. Courtney?
Mrs. Courtney.
To discuss.
To discuss paraprofessional negotiations and administrative contracts. We will return to open session for adjournment?
Just adjournment, yeah.
It's been a long time since I've done that.
It's been a long time since you've done that.
How do you supposed to do that?
I didn't get the call. He moved to the left.
Dustin. Roll call, Travis.
Hi, yes.
Sarah.
Hi.
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 All right, and I think what we'll do is we'll go into, uh, the conference room. So, that way you guys can break down and then you can stop it after, by the way.